So we're coming back out of executive session at 8:23 PM. Do I need a motion to come out?
No, you just come out of executive session.
You're just coming out. S- I would assume it's S.O.O.S.V.E.R.J. through one of the tribe. Okay, so anything about the consent calendar? Consent calendar, anything? So I'm passing the consent calendar unanimously. The communications, we're going to have a A to H. Public participation, anybody want to participate publicly? Raise your little hand. I don't see anybody, correct? So we're going on to appointments. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dave Geismar, Republican of Forest Six Cutler's Farm Road, to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term ending May 16, 2022. The current person that was appointed there, the appointment has expired, therefore there was an opening.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, I just, oh, Mr. Formicella. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of this appointment?
Do we have any bio?
Do you have, we have a bio?
I was waiting for discussion, but gladly say it now. Dave Geismar is a 35-year resident Monroe with 12 years of law enforcement experience. He served four and a half years as police officer in the town of Monroe, and now works for the Milwaukee Police Department. Mr. Geismar's extensive experience will make him a true asset to the police commission. This appointment holds the expired term of Gary Schufa.
Any other comments, discussion? So all in favor of this appointment? It passes a eight to zero. Going on to action.
Madam Chair.
Oh, was he here?
Is he present tonight, if you wouldn't mind?
No, not at all. I assume I'm going into another meeting, so I didn't see him come into this one.
Come on down. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you thinkfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners to the best of your abilities to help your God or help penalty for your duty?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, going on to action items. A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not present at the last meeting, unfortunately. It was just a review of the plans, the 80% completed plans that were given to us by Jacuzzi and Holmes. We do have a letter in here, I'm sure you all have read, that we have, about the committee and its choice. You can gladly read that. I discussed it last, but we will be meeting again on June 11.
I think that was E M S.
Yeah, that's E M S. Different committee.
No, it sits in here about the.
E M S comes up later.
Right.
It's a letter.
Okay, well, maybe I'm a little confused, I apologize. We'll be meeting on June 11.
Okay, so B, Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Rec Matters. There was a little confusion about whether this liquor store law had been passed or not, so I went and asked somebody in the town hall today. So the elimination of the 1,500-foot separation requirement between package doors was adopted by P and Z on May 16, 2019. So I just wanted to say that. That's all I have. Anything, Park and Rec, I don't think has met since the last time.
No, I think Park and Rec, oh, Park and Rec meets next Monday, it's going to be for a tour of the park.
Right, and I think you mentioned it once before, June 3. Okay, C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you. We did meet tonight, but we did not have any topics.
I'm sorry, what?
We did meet tonight, but we did not have any topics.
Okay, going on to D, Strategic Planning Committee. Do we have someone here from that?
They have not, I know they have not met. I know, I did speak to the chairman earlier this week in regards, I think there's still an open seat on that, which he intended to take care of. And it just hasn't happened yet, but he would be addressing that in the short term.
Okay. Next, E, EMS Building Committee. Mr. Rooney?
That's where I went wrong. I reported in FAP site EMS Building Committee. So if we could just go back to that, that's my statement. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Mr. Rooney, just on the, I noticed on the minutes, it says the next meeting to be held on April 8, but this meeting was on April 30.
Yeah, there was a little confusion. There was a meeting on April 8 where we chose to see Adam, and then there was an additional meeting on April 13, in which there was a discussion about the plans that are 80% completed. So, sorry about the.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Thank you. What are the next steps in, in, in the architecture, architects update?
Architectural update.
Yeah. The next steps, and this is to both Mr. Rooney and Mr. Kellogg, it says the next steps for the cell tower. Do we have an update on that, or Town Council anything?
So that's, that's, those are connected efforts, but that's really a separate, a separate issue that we're addressing. I've been in conversations with the, you know, ATT, the head of the original proposed that, and so I'm waiting for additional information from them on how they want to proceed. We have something, we have more information than we did before, but it's not quite ready to be fully vetted. But my, what I said to them is I want to get to a certain point where we can understand options, and, you know, ultimately it has to come back to council.
Okay.
Without, but I want to get to.
I just hadn't heard it talked about.
Yeah, I want to get to a point where we can have some information sessions before councils, you know, kind of under the gun for a decision, because the next, you know, there's the whole A 24 and all that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Martin?
Actually, I believe this is for Mr. Keller. Have we made a determination on who owns that property? The fire station property?
It's town property.
Okay. Did the town record say it's owned by the town of Monroe, and then in purposes it says fire stations?
You mean the assessor's record?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just indicating the use.
That's all it is, just the use?
That's all it is. So it's a fire station.
The, if you remember in strategic planning, there was some discussion with the fire service that, that was their property.
That's not accurate.
Thank you for that.
I actually had, I think we researched that, to be sure of that.
Okay, good, thank you. Not to anybody else.
Very briefly, just to clarify the record. So for A, for the minutes, FAP's no report as we have met.
Unless you have something for AJ?
No, nothing since our last meeting.
Okay, so I'm going on to F, first selectmen's update.
Thank you, so I just, I passed out a brief written report, most of it, some updates on some state projects. So the Route 25 project, the state has advised us that they have scheduled their final weekend detour for June 14 through 17, in kind of the normal window for that weekend of late Friday evening to very early Monday morning. That, of course, is always is weather dependent, and this is, again, the final detour, which is necessary for them to remove the temporary road surface, raise the embosses anywhere from 18 to, I think, 22 inches, also making the driveways of the businesses flush with a new roadway. And so that, that's the last major effort, and then from then it's just them basically doing finishing touches and things that would not require any further detours, and hopefully they will be done by the summer. The Route 34 Bridge Project, that effort near the Stevenson Dam, that temporary light is scheduled to go on flash on June 18, when the road goes back open to full, full two-way traffic. And they will have some work that will continue on. There might be a week period of some daytime one-way traffic requirements that will be handled by police officers, but the, the major interruption there hopefully will be, will be over soon as well. And then last, but certainly not least, is the update on the light at Bradford and Route 25. As I think everyone's aware, the public information session with DOT is scheduled to be in this room tomorrow evening, starting at 7:00 PM. I want to make it clear that in my conversations with DOT, they made it very clear that they have not made a final decision in regards to the light. They are evaluating the federal requirements, but they have said to me directly that the, that community input is a factor. So I certainly would encourage everyone to attend and participate. They will also make efforts after the meeting. There will be opportunities for those to submit comments for a, for a specific window time after the meeting as well, which they will provide tomorrow night. The other item I just wanted to report back on, I know we discussed the last meeting, Parks and Recreation and the sponsorship rules and the work the commission was done there. I just wanted to clarify, I think there might have been a, just a miscommunication in terms of what they were looking for. They advised me they were not looking to review those at the last council meeting. Their goal was to, they did send me their initial thoughts, they wanted to get my input, and certainly I want to get our town attorney's input, which I have asked for as well, so that they could bring it back to the commission before coming to the council. So I anticipated that will be at the next commission meeting, that they'll have, I mean, they'll certainly have our, my initial thoughts and our feedback, and then hopefully, you know, this will be in enough time for your, the next council meeting on June 10, you should be able to have something in front of you. And I, it wasn't on my report, but I also wanted to make mention of the, we had talked at a prior meeting about the Fairfield County Commercial Brokers Meeting, which will be this Friday. We're, it's still well underway with our EDC and our Chief of Commerce helping out in that effort. We did speak, you know, with them, there, we, there's a fairly large attendance list at this point, so unfortunately I don't think, there's some hesitation in kind of opening up bus seats until they really have an idea of who's going to continue on that bus, and we really won't know until the last minute, although they're, they're trying to ascertain who's interested in that as well. But with 100 people there and last-minute stuff, so a little bit, a little bit leery for just opening up really wide. But, you know, all I can say is, unless it's a last-minute thing, I don't know how we would accomplish it at this point, so. That is all I have.
Okay.
The good news is we have a lot, a lot signed up. I think there's 100, 100.
Wow. For unfinished business, resolution regarding the Wolf Park Food Concessions Temporary License Agreement. Mr. Kellogg, do you have?
Thank you, yes. So unfortunately, we do not, don't have anything before you tonight. We discussed last time that we had a couple of options that we were working through, and we had had anticipated to be through that process. What occurred since then, was transpired since then, is that there were some delays due to a family emergency at one of the prospective vendors, which, which further kind of put things back timewise. I had, I wanted it to remain on this agenda because I had anticipated that we'd be able to get things back up and running and get something out to you in time, or even attempt to resolve things over the weekend. What occurred since then is that the vendor we were working with has had some other business activities that they are involved in that has caused them to have multiple things that they're trying to address at once, and their currently feeling is that they don't want to, they don't think that they have the time to pull this off in the timeframes that we would like at this point, although they are interested. So we are working with another, the other contender, and although I anticipated that we'd be able to have some answers, I was hoping to try and get you some answers tonight, but unfortunately, that individual has not had time to meet with his partners in regards to a couple of the provisions. So I think we're extremely close, but unfortunately I don't have anything for you tonight.
Okay. So going on to new business. A, Resolution Regarding the State of Connecticut Sale of State-Owned Land at Monroe Turnpike and Old Tannery Road. I will introduce the motion, Resolution Regarding State of Connecticut DOT Sale of State-Owned Land at Monroe Turnpike and Old Tannery Road, and that's the resolution, and move for its adoption. So resolve that the Monroe Town Council finds that the town is not interested in the approximately 1,466 square foot parcel of land illustrated by State Department of Transportation, Doc File 4-000-89, Monroe Turnpike at Old Tannery Road, and authorizes Kenneth Van Kellag, first selectman, to indicate same to the DOT. So that's the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reed. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Ms. Lepalas. So as my memo outlines, the state had advised me earlier in the year that they were looking to dispose of a parcel of land that they own, Monroe Turnpike at Old Tannery Road. There's a map in your package that indicates this small parcel, it's actually right outside of town hall. I had staff evaluate that. There's actually three small parcels that, it's actually a piece of excess right-of-way, as it was characterized by our town engineer. Each of those parcels abut a private property owner, and it appears the state's in the process of trying to eliminate, you know, remove that excess right-of-way as they don't feel it's necessary any longer, and so they're offering it to those abutting property owners. Per state statute, it has to be offered to the town first. We essentially have a right of first refusal. The sale price is $26,000. Having gotten the report from staff that they find no compelling reason for the town to acquire this parcel, from our town engineer, our town planner, and our public works director, all have found no significant issues regarding this. Obviously, there'd be a small increase to the grant list of the parcel going to private ownership as opposed to the town continuing to own it or maintain it. So it would certainly be my recommendation that we allow the state to sell the parcel to the private landowner, and that we pass on this.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we can vote on this resolution. All in favor? Passes eight to zero. Going on to B, Resolution Regarding WMNR's Fiscal Year 2020 Proposed Budget. I'll introduce the following resolution, WMNR FY 2020 Proposed Budget, and move for its adoption. Resolve that WMNR's fiscal year 2020 budget is hereby approved as proposed. Do I hear a second? Second by Mrs. Martin. Discussion, Kurt Anderson is in the audience.
Yes, so I will, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Anderson. You've got my cover memo. This is certainly a process I think you're familiar with, that they come to both the council and the Board of Finance to run through their budget, which is entirely funded through grants and.
If you wonder why it's the end of May and WMNR is asking for a budget approval, it's because we're a special revenue fund. We don't use a penny of town taxpayer funds. There are some town members that donate, but it's a special revenue fund. The process is we get the budget approved by the WMR Commission, the Board of Finance, and then the finance scheduling, it's a little inverted. We'll get their approval at the, at their next meeting in June. We do expect to get the grant, the $85,000 grant from the Corporation of Public Broadcasting, as we've gotten it since 1993. We do actually pay about $9,000 for an independent audit from a local auditor to help us get that grant, because part of it's a matching grant, or there's an incentive portion. And that very specific audited financial statement is on our website at WMNR.org. Let's see, if there are any questions, we do, of course, pay the town $37,400 to help cut checks and to deal with HR for us, but even this auditor's fee comes out of our budget, and it's, everything else that we can possibly pay for, we pay for.
Okay, any questions?
Not so much a question, just as a comment, thank you for everything that you do for the community and for continuing to provide this programming to the community. It's such a wonderful aspect of our town, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Agreed, thank you, Kurt.
So we have to vote on this?
So, yeah, I have a very short, one-line proposed resolution. Someone would like to, or did you read that already and I missed it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so can we vote on this resolution? All in favor? Passes eight to zero. Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. Going on, Transfer of Funds from 10-248A Fund to Board of Education for Special Education. I will make a motion to adopt the opinion of legal counsel that no legislative action is required relative to the contemplated transfer of up to $505,000 from the reserve fund established by the Board of Finance pursuant to CGS 10-248A. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Discussion?
Thank you. So as I outlined in my cover memo, and I think as you're all aware, during the budgetary process, the Board of Finance, one of the Board of Finance meetings, the Board of Ed, had advised the Board of Finance that they were likely to exceed their fiscal year 19 budget allocation, specifically rates to special education costs. The Board of Ed is actively working on that situation, as well as their financial reporting and budgetary oversight issues. The Board of Finance has been very engaged as well, and as you know, Dr. Zamri is here with his staff as well. I'm sure he's certainly willing to answer any questions he may have in that regard. However, to resolve the fiscal year 19 shortfall, the Board of Ed had, has requested that the Board of Finance make this transfer from the fund established pursuant to Section 10-248A of our statutes, of Connecticut statutes. The Board of Finance has approved that transfer, and we simply want to ensure that this council is aware of that and the fact that, as per the attached opinion from Special Counsel Moreno, who is also here, if you have any questions, that, his opinion that is not necessary to conduct or call a town meeting under our charter for this for a couple of, a couple of reasons based upon the statute and the way those funds are established. So that's pretty much the intro.
Any quick questions?
Comments?
Mrs. Bagula?
I was actually a little confused as to why we were seeing this, as we weren't even presented the fact that, that they were, I mean, I know because I went to the Board of Finance meetings, but it wasn't presented to Town Council that this was actually an issue.
Well, the, this did not come to light until after the budget had passed from the council already, and it was actually in the Board of Finance, and so it was certainly on the public record. And I know that there were discussions about, you know, the Board of Ed and where they were in the process, so there was no action for council at that time.
Okay, Mr. Mauer?
While I agree with the idea that the council need not put this to a public hearing, there's still a lot of information, I do think that is, that the public has a right to know as to exactly what these fund, a stronger idea of exactly what these funds are, where they went. And I just want to answer as to what, not only what precautions are being taken to be sure that such a large shortfall does not happen again, but also what's happening to, so be transparent as to what happened to these funds already.
That's absolutely appropriate, and those, those conversations have occurred at Board of Ed meetings and Board of Finance meetings, but that's specifically why they're here tonight, and I'm, you know, with the chair's permission, I'd be happy to have Dr. Zamri speak to that.
So to respond to your question, the, first of all, the shortfall came in very late, too late, in terms of understanding the, the issues with our special education funding. That has resulted in a number of changes. One of the things that I did is I sat with my staff for four days to get an accurate accounting of the special education shortfall, line by line. Went through that with both Board of Finance and Board of Ed. So that has been fixed. We've also had a staffing change, too, and one of the things I'd like to do is introduce you to our interim Director of Finance, Frank Connolly. Frank, if you could just give everybody a wave. And so we've had a change in that regard, because really we shouldn't be learning about this kind of a shortfall this late in the year. It just shouldn't be. So we've made some changes with controls also with our finances. One of the things that we had in the past with our special ed funding is we get something called excess cost grant money from the state of Connecticut to reimburse us for high-cost special education. In the past, we've been using two accounts to fund it, a grant account and then also our operating budget. The problem with that approach is that special ed and our finance department were billing against both accounts, and it wasn't a good way to see where we were in real time. So one of the things with Mr. Connolly's help that we've done is we've gotten Board of Ed affirmation on this, is moving forward, we're no longer going to have that. We're going to have one line where all expenditures are made, and then as we get our monies back from the grant, that will be used to offset the costs, so that in terms of real-time view of where we are throughout the year, we get a much more accurate picture throughout the year. And related to that, this is going to be something that we're going to use as an ongoing report to the Board of Education, so we're not in a position where we get this late in the year and we've got this huge hole. It just shouldn't be, just shouldn't be. So really what it comes down to is, unfortunately, there are two places where we have much less control in our budget. Special ed is one, and health insurance is another. I wish I could tell you that this, the special ed shortfall was unique to Monroe. It's not. The thing that is unique to us, that has to be corrected, is we shouldn't know about this issue so late in the game. If we, we should be able to see this coming September, October, November, December, and say, oh my God, we got an issue, we have to make some adjustments and some changes. That part is not excusable, and that's something we've made a lot of changes around, so we're not back in this position ever again.
Where the funds that are now being transferred to cover this shortfall, what were those funds originally allocated for?
Those were end-of-year monies approved, previously approved as Board of Ed funds. So when we got to the end of any given year, monies through approval by Board of Ed and Board of Finance would be put into this 10-248A account that was developed per state statute to have a place for contingency for Boards of Ed. Boards of Ed don't have contingency funds. It doesn't exist. So this was created in order to have a place to put some funds, so that when there is an issue, you have the ability to be able to draw out to have that contingency available. So it's really consistent with the, the needs of this current situation to draw the funds out.
Anything else, Mrs. Martin?
Were those funds earmarked for something else prior to this situation?
The, the only thing that was earmarked in there was for turf carpet replacement. That remains. So there's a portion of money that we told the community, we would save money in there. That amount of money remains in there, so that that is not touched as part of this transfer.
Is, is it typical, I mean, every year do you keep this so-called contingency fund active?
Correct.
You do?
It continues year over year. And then will be drawn upon for various capital expenses. In the past, it's been used to purchase plow trucks for the Board of Ed, things of that nature. It was used to fund part of the turf field, that project. There is a statutory change coming about in July '21, but really all it does is say that it's Board of Ed discretion to be able to, when, when they choose to pull the money out, basically it's the Board of Ed's call to be able to pull it out. That's coming, they're saying July, July 1 of '20, that change would occur.
Anything else?
I had been at the Board of Ed meeting. Was it, was there not some discussion about a separate account or a separate fund?
The one other place we'll be using some monies to also take care of the shortfall is our special revenues account, and that's a place where we have some income from things like donations, or for example, we'll get some income if there's a foster child placement within our district, but the jurisdiction for that child is another municipality. We'll get some income from tuition for that. So we would be using those funds within special revenue also towards the shortfall.
And what were, were those funds, would they typically be used for?
Again, there, those are income amounts we would have as, you know, a little bit of contingency. So it's, that's not a, you know, it wouldn't be an inconsistent use to be able to apply that towards this end.
Mr. Mauer?
Do we have any idea as to why the extreme shortfall for this year as compared to other years? Considering that this is something that is unpredictable year after year, one would think that we would have had shortfall, something showing up to this, for it to be so extreme this year.
Sure. There's two, well, there's a couple of reasons. First of all, special ed transportation has been in the red four years in a row. Significant amounts of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars each year for four years in a row. As you might recall, when we presented the Board of Ed budget this year, the largest increase percentage-wise in an account line was our special ed transportation that went up by 17% in order to put us in a place where we wouldn't see that account going into the red again. So that's one part of the explanation. Another piece is we do have new students moving in. And when we have new students move in with an I. in with an IEP, by law, we have to honor, honor that IEP. Uh, the way that we fund, or the way that we project our budget is we do not include for any new students, we don't. We base our budget, historically, we based it on the students that we have in the district. So if we have new students move in, that has a major impact. The other place that, uh, had a major impact on this is our excess cost grant, and the calculations for that historically have been based on, it's a complex formula, but the short story is, our per pupil expenditure rate state, set, set by the State of Connecticut determines our reimbursement for excess cost. We were using older, uh, per pupil amounts to calculate the excess cost rate. The effect of doing that was, we went into the year with a shortfall that was in roughly two hundred plus thousand dollars from what I remember, roughly a quarter million dollars, just because our projections weren't using, uh, better means to be more accurate. So one of the things I did when I sat down with the staff is we took a look at our per pupil expenditure over five years, we calculated our average increase over five years' time, and we're now using that to project our excess cost for the future, so that we're not in this position where we start the year a quarter of a million dollars in the hole. So it's a huge, uh, a huge hole, uh, to try to backfill as you enter a year. So we, transportation in the red every single year, quarter million dollar projection off in the red, and new students coming in, you put those three, three things together and you have the situation that we have. Again, the biggest problem is, we should have known about this way earlier than we did.
Anybody on the side of questions? No questions?
One follow-up just to, um, so the transportation's been in the red for four years, where has the money for that, the shortfall year after year been coming?
That's a good question too. So one of the things that will occur is if we have maternity leaves, we end up saving a little bit of money in our staff account. Um, this year we had some maternity leaves, but we didn't save money, the reason why is we got into, uh, last, a year ago at this time, we saw our class sizes increasing, and we have three elementary classrooms in the district where we had to add a teacher, we're going to have, uh, class sizes that were just too large. So what we did is we knew, generally we have a little bit of wiggle room at the end of the year with our staffing when we have maternity leaves, because what happens is people will go out on leave, uh, and sometimes those leaves will go longer, they'll go into an unpaid leave, and then we pay for a sub. Net effect is, it costs us less, we have a little bit of wiggle room if we have to add a teacher. Well, last year we had these three classrooms where we had to add teachers going through the year, we added three teachers, so that's the cost of roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we added two A S S Os, uh, which typically, or we have SROs, but we added A S Os because the police departments having a hard time filling those positions, that's roughly another hundred thousand dollars. So there's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we went into the year hoping we'd realize some savings towards the end of the year, and the, one balanced out the other, we didn't have a place to go to be able to, to have some money in the staffing account. So, um, that was another challenge we had going into this year.
Thank you, any other questions?
No.
Otherwise we can vote on this, uh, resolution, all in favor? There's any?
Yes, it was. It, it was not on there, it was to, uh-
Oh, I read the motion, so we have to go in there. Correct, we're voting on the, the motion, all in favor?
I don't know what the motion is.
Okay, I'll do, I can do the motion again. I have it on my little cell phone, let me find it.
It, it's not written on there.
Let me just get it, where is it?
Yes, and I seconded it.
Yeah, it's, it's, do you want to read it, uh, Carol, please?
Uh, this is the one that you decided to change, so I didn't, I was going to give it from-
Okay, so let me just find it, I have it on my cell-
You're right, you didn't segment it myself.
Okay, let me just find it, uh, where is it?
That we don't need-
To prove it-
That we don't need to put this to public hearing-
That's right.
As per the statute, that's the basis of the motion.
Yes, I look for it, here we go. Okay, move to adopt the opinion of legal counsel that no legitimate action is required relative to contemplated transfer of up to five hundred and five thousand dollars from the reserve fund established by the BOF pursuant to CGS ten dash two four eight A. And it's been seconded, so now we can vote on it.
There's a slight add, also there is no town meeting or town action required.
That's what I think it says, no legislative actions required.
Just as legislative.
Okay, so you want to add to it, there's no town-
Well, legislative action would be the council calling for the town, so you're covered.
So it's okay.
Good.
All right, and Frank, who's not here, just wanted to be known that he's in favor, and he agrees with what you've been doing with this motion, okay? He wanted to have a say, which is fine. All right, all in favor? So it passes eight to zero, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh-
Thank you.
So next we have the call for public hearing for Neighborhood Assistance Act program applications, so I'm calling for it on June tenth, which is our next, uh, meeting, at seven PM. So June tenth, seven PM is the call, okay? And then, um, public participation, anybody want to speak at second for public participation? Seeing nobody, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Mauer, seconded by Mr. Rooney, all in favor?
No.
Passes eight to zero, thank you.